Good evening to everyone and welcome to the Thursday, January 21st, virtual, regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. Like to welcome all of our citizens who are live streaming with us on this evening, and also say welcome back again to Ms. Costello-Williams, and congratulations on your reappointment for this term. We're glad to have you back.
Thank you Chairman Patillo, thank you.
You're welcome. At this time, I ask we now pause for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. I now ask that our pledge of allegiance will be led by Board Member Ms. Yolanda Edmas Thomas, and she will also lead us. And I pledge allegiance, thank you.
Thank you Chairman Patillo. And I see our clock, school board member clock here, thank you for bringing the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God.
In good business.
With liberty. With liberty and justice for all.
We now have an opinion, a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Oh Chairman Patillo, did you want me to state the mission statement?
Yeah, they have it listed here on the agenda after the attendance, so I was just following the items.
Okay, no problem.
You may go ahead and do the attendance.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mrs. Hahn?
Here.
Mr. Parent?
Here.
Ms. Schumake?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Reverend Patillo?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you so much. And we'll now have, uh, agenda item 2.5, the School Board Mission Statement by Ms. Yolanda Edmas Thomas.
Sure. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. Before we have the roll call vote on the approval of the agenda, I did want to bring to your attention, we do have a consent agenda listed uh, on section 5.1 through 5.6. I know you've had it in your board docs, but I wanted to check to make sure no one had any questions that you would like to have pull out of the consent agenda first before we proceed. Ms. Duncan Hines?
Yes sir, thank you Chairman. Um, I would just like for a clarification or clarity for the budget increase for the CARES Act, just a brief overview so that everybody understands what the CARES Act is and what we're using the CARES Act for, that it's not, it doesn't go, it's instruction, but it's not instruction. So I just want everybody to understand what the CARES Act is and why we're getting an increase in it, if we don't mind.
Okay.
No questions, just an explanation.
Okay, uh, I will pull, uh, agenda item.
Or can we just, can I just ask about it before we do the consent?
Sure, you can do it under discussion.
Yeah, we'll just, okay.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you.
No problem. Alright, we now ask for a motion, uh, for the approval of the agenda. Oh.
Second.
It mostly, you have a Mr. Parent, second by Ms. Atkinson. Now any discussion, Ms. Hines?
Um, yes, I was hoping that somebody from finance could explain the CARES Act, uh, for those that are watching and for those that are listening, and so, um, everybody's, everybody has a, a clear understanding of what that money is going to do.
Okay, would you mind answering that for us?
Sure, sure. Um, the item before you tonight is, uh, for an allocation from the Virginia Department of Education that came from the federal government for federal CARES Act, uh, revenue, uh, in response to coronavirus. In this specific case, we're being awarded a million, uh, sixty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars under a program called the Vision Fund, which is allowing us to purchase, um, Wi-Fi access and other computer peripherals for, to, um, to have virtual instruction going on. So the state gave us a amount of money to do that. So that is what that particular grant funding is going to do, and is doing right now, um, to allow us to have Wi-Fi access for those that do not.
Thank you, can I ask one follow-up question?
Yes ma'am.
What is the accessibility of those Wi-Fi spots as we sit right now? Supply and demand, because we've talked a lot about, we have a lot of things on order, but it can't be fulfilled because we're number thirteen or number seventy-two in line, because everybody wants this. So, so what is the feasibility of getting these Wi-fis in, uh, for the completion of this year?
Yes ma'am. Uh, at the beginning of the, of the fiscal year, actually even before that, back, um, in, in May or June, we procured a large number of Wi-Fi access points, um, to make sure, and hotspots, to make sure that we had them on hand as we went into a virtual, uh, platform. I can't speak for the actual inventory, but I know we have plenty of them, uh, available. I know some families have already taken advantage of that, um, but we do have others if anybody else would need, um, that access, um, if they didn't have it in their home.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't out and this was an emergency procurement, because we did talk a lot last year, um, the minute we went out in March. I mean, we started that second March meeting and into April and May, talking about what we were going to need and what we needed. So I do appreciate all of our, all of our efforts, and especially the purchasing department, to be first in line so that our students and that our staff have access to these. And I think I've asked before, and I don't know that it falls under yours, um, but have teachers, are teachers able to request the, the Wi-Fi, um, to, to make sure that they can provide classes from home? And I don't know if that's a you question or not, but I, I can leave it with where I need to leave it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, motion has been made and has been seconded to approve the agenda.
I just, I, uh, that, if I may, um, to Mr. Falk, I just want to clear up any rumors or any fake news that's circulating that none of the CARES Act's funding is going towards the school renaming. So I just wanted you to clear that up, please, Mr. Falk.
Sure, um, in order to receive this money, uh, we have to provide reimbursement information from the state. Uh, the school renaming would not be a eligible, uh, use of these funds, so therefore we couldn't use them for that purpose. These funds are done on a reimbursement basis, so if we did use it for anything like that, it would not be approved. So, no, we're not using any of these funds for school renaming, only for those activities that are approved in the CARES Act, um, regulations and policies.
Thank you, Mr. Falk.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, thank you for that clarification, Madam Vice Chair, and also Mr. Falk, and also Ms. Hines. Uh, do we have any other further discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hutton?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Ms. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Is unanimous?
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.1, uh, as Vice Chair will now move us into closed session.
I move that the board entered into a closed meeting under the provisions of section 2.2 dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia for the following purpose, consideration of various personal matters, including the assignment, performance, and resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection, subsection A dot one.
Motion has been made, do we have a second?
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, motion made by Vice Chairwoman Atkinson, and second by Mr. Parent. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hahn?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Ms. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Is unanimous?
Thank you so much, and I just ask the public to bear with us, we will be moving very briefly into a closed session at this time.
You're back.
Yes ma'am, everybody should be back.
Awesome. I move that each board member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, only matters which are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and which were identified in a motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the preceding closed meeting.
Thank you, we have a motion made by Ms. Atkinson, we have a second?
Second, Schumake.
Have a second made by Ms. Schumake, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hahn?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yeah.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.1, public comment. Do we have any non-agenda item speakers, Madam Clerk?
No sir.
Right, agenda item 4.2, public comment, do we have any, uh, speakers for board agenda items?
No sir.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 5.1 through 5.6 is consent agenda, do we have a motion for approval?
Move for approval, Hans?
Second, Williams.
Motion was made by Ms. Hines, and second by Ms. Williams, do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hahn?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yeah.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Is unanimous?
Thank you. Agenda item 6.1, curriculum and instruction report. Dr. Bracy is okay, we have Ms. Nguyen come up, Dr. Nguyen come up now?
Yes sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening Chairman Patillo, Vice Chairman Atkinson, and members of the board. It's always a pleasure to bring you the, uh, curriculum instruction report. You will note that the written report is listed in your board docs, and for tonight, we have another special treat for you. The Office of Mathematics Coloring Book Project was completed through the high school Algebra I and Algebra Functions and Data Analysis classes. This took place during the first semester of the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one school year, and this project incorporated BDOE's five Cs of critical thinking, creative thinking, communication, collaboration, and citizenship. Students completed this project while working with mathematics content. Tonight, we have a presentation that will highlight the project and showcase some of our PPS students' work. Dean, I believe you have the, the, uh, presentation.
The Desmos Coloring Book Project was created last school year prior to schools being closed. We received a donation of crayons and markers from the Crayola Company, and additionally, they featured the project in their Crayola blog. A grant from the Virginia Council for Mathematical Supervision provided funding to allow printing of the coloring books and purchasing of backpacks. This project focused on the Virginia Department of Education's five Cs, which include citizenship, creative thinking, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. Desmos is an online tool which the Department of Education now uses for SOL testing. It is an online graphing calculator which students utilize to create the coloring book pages. Mathematics equations are entered on the left, and then they appear as a graph on the graphing area. The project began with students sketching out the pages they would like to create, and then they began by entering the equations and creating their graphics. Here is a sample of one that a student created. And you can see the communication among the students as they are working on their projects. And our teachers even got in on the fun as well. So, the final project, here are some samples from the pages of the coloring. You can see we have very creative Portsmouth Public Schools. After the coloring books were printed and bound, we were able to provide the backpacks with the coloring books, the crayons, and the markers. We created one hundred backpacks which were donated to the Hursh Shelter in May. And this project would not have been successful if not for our students in Algebra I and Afta classes, as well with. We appreciate the donations from Crayola crayons and the grant from BCMS. Additionally, the high school program specialists from the Office of Mathematics Education provided support to the teachers and the students as the project was completed.
Thank you Dr. Nichols for your narration and that excellent presentation, and this is a great partnership that we have. And I believe each of you board members have received a copy of those, uh, coloring books that were created by our wonderful students. So kudos to our students, and thank you for, um, great instruction and great ways of making sure that students have hands-on experience with these projects. Are there any?
And thank you for the coloring book, thank you very much.
You're welcome. This concludes our report.
Thank you so much Dr. Nguyen, do we have any, uh, comments or questions from board members at this time? I see Ms. Hines.
Good evening, and you know I can't let a project like this go without saying something, um, my, my experience with algebra is not always the best experience, um, and I don't know, I don't know if anybody knows this, but I met Dr. Nichols, well then it was Mrs. Nichols when I was actually doing student teaching, she was actually the teacher next door. Um, so I met her early on in my career, and she has always been a breath of fresh air, and she's always brought some, some good ideas and has encouraged creativity. Um, but to get this coloring book in the mail and to see what our kids have done, when I can barely use a calculator some days on my phone to, to tabulate a kid's grade real quick, what these kids were able to do with this calculator and with what has happened here is absolutely wonderful. So I just want to thank them for pushing the bar and keeping it creative and, and showing us and reminding us that math isn't always just numbers and ledgers and, you know, greater than, equal to, or less than. So thank you Dr. Nichols in the math department.
Thank you so much, Ms. Duncan Hines.
Do you have any other questions or comments from board members? I also want to, want to thank the staff, everyone's had to adjust, uh, due to us being virtual, and you all go above and beyond to get the information to our homes, if it's not the coloring books, it's also the financials, so I really appreciate you doing, going above and behind. Thank God to Bracy to you and your staff. Next, we have agenda item 6.2, Fiscal Year 2019/20 CAFER and Student Activity Fund Report, and we have Ms. Laura Harden here from our partners at Cherry Becker. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, um, thank you for having me here tonight to present the results of the 2020 audit. Um, I do have a presentation, I'm not sure if, Theo, um, if you know if that can be broadcasted.
Sure, Dean Good, I emailed those to you, not sure if you've been able to catch them, uh, to get them uploaded.
If not, I can verbally do it without the.
Yeah, I did not get those, but I can, I can pull them up here in just a second, if you want to wait, it's up to you. It's the CAFER, it's the CAFER one Dean, thank you.
And Mr. Mr. Falk, and could you just briefly explain why they're pulling that up, uh, to our new board members, what the CAFER actually is?
Sure.
Went to the presentation, why they pulled that up?
Um, each year, uh, we're, we're required as all school divisions in the state of Virginia to have an annual audit of our, um, comprehensive annual financial report, other, better known as the CAFER. So, um, Laura and, and her firm Cherry Becker are the, uh, firm that does that audit work for us. Uh, they come in over many months, um, looking at details, records, so on and so forth, and then they give us an opinion at the end of that audit as to how the audit went, uh, based on financial, um, generally accepted auditing standards. Um, and so it's a huge undertaking for the whole division, but we're, we're pleased to present the results tonight, you'll see that. And then the second report is the Student, uh, Activity Fund Audit, which is, are the funds that are held at the school level, uh, that the principals and the bookkeepers there manage, uh, a- as well as, uh, with financial, uh, oversight from our office. So you'll see those two reports, you should have gotten copies of both those reports, um, and Laura will go through them as soon as we can get this presentation out.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Good, how are we looking on your end?
We are just about there, give us one second please.
Alright, no problem.
Sorry for the delay.
No problem, thank you.
Is Lauren able to give us the good news first?
Um, sure, I can, I can skip ahead to that slide, it's in the beginning. Um, so, as Theo did mention, um, Dean, if you want to just switch, go to the fourth slide, um, these are just introductory slides. But, um, so, this audit is a very big undertaking for the school division, and our audit is, um, encompasses both the school board and the school activity funds. And in addition to that, we do, um, do, do audit the compliance of the school board's compliance with laws and regulations under the government auditing standards, as well as the auditor of public accounts for the specifications of audits of county, cities, and towns. And then, in addition to that, there is the single audit which is reported in the city's CAFER. Um, so we start this process in the summer, and we go all the way until December this year, and issued our report in December eighteen, uh, eighteenth, twenty twenty. Um, please forward two slides. So I am pleased to, uh, report to you that we did issue an unmodified opinion on both the school activity fund financial statements, as well as the school division's CAFER. And, um, that is the best, um, opinion that you can get on your financial statements. So that's, um, and basically a clean audit opinion. In addition to that, if we did identify anything in our testing that we considered to be a significant deficiency or a material weakness in internal control, we would be required to report that to you today. Um, and we did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting. In addition to that, we didn't have anything that came to our attention where management didn't comply with those laws and regulations, um, which could have a material effect on the financial statements. Uh, go forward, two more slides please. So there are just a few required communications. Um, as far as accounting policies, there were no changes in accounting policies during fiscal year twenty twenty. That means if you compared the twenty.
Okay, looks like we're having some technical issues.
Yes, we, we may have lost her, um, my apologies, I will watch for her to log back in.
Okay, and let's go ahead and, um, we can go ahead and exit from this screen Dean, and give her a chance to get back logged in, and we can proceed, that's okay with the board members. Alright, uh, we'll move along to, uh, discussion item 6.3, the WHRO update, and we have Mr. Burt Schmidt here to help us with that.
Yes, Chairman Patillo, thank you, uh, members of the board. Dr. Bracy, thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. Uh, I am Burt, President and CEO of WHRO. With me is Elmer Seward, he's my Vice President of Education Services, and I come to you every other year to provide, uh, provide a summary of the investment you make into the station and to summarize the services we provide you. I'm going to do a screen share, I hope Dean don't mess this up, but I'm going to try to share from my tablet, and hopefully it's all going to work good. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes sir.
Yes. Good, 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 thank you. So, we provided you an in-depth report, uh, twenty-seven pages, I'm not going to go through all of that, of course, but the cover looks something like this, so hopefully you've gotten either a soft or hard copy of our impact segment, we provide you this report every year regardless of whether I come to actually, uh, present this to you. As you probably know, you're one of twenty-one school divisions that own WHRO. We're the only public media station in the entire country owned by collaboration of public schools, that in nineteen sixty-one Norfolk and Hampton got together and created Home Room One, which is what WHRO stands for, and today we're owned by twenty-one school divisions. So, uh, this year, of course, has been very unique with the pandemic, and so we, uh, had schools reach out to us, as well as, uh, Dr. Lane from the DOE, and they, they said to us two things, one, we're trying to figure out how to deal their youngest children, because online learning is really tough for kindergarten, first, second, third, etc. Um, and so we got to figure out a way to help educate those children. We also heard from the DOE that many children, of course, don't have access to the internet. But of course, everybody, uh, through broadcast has access to public, uh, television. So, working with the Department of Education, working, um, with our schools, we created Virginia TV Classroom, and here's a quick little, uh, summary of that service.
Attention parents and students, Virginia TV Classroom is making it easy again for you to learn in your living room. We're back for season two. Students kindergarten to seventh grade tune in weekdays to see teacher-led and SOL-aligned instruction. It's Virginia's teachers teaching on TV. Watch Virginia TV Classroom and learn more.
Beginning September fourteenth at eleven on WHRO.
So Virginia TV Classroom started actually last March when the pandemic hit us, um, and we did the two seasons, uh, we had, ended up the second season just this October, as the funding did run out, but we were able to provide every single day with every public TV station in Virginia, um, classes for kindergarten through seventh grade, as well as AP review, so, um, wow, really well, uh, used. Every single lesson was done by teachers throughout the region or throughout the state, and every lesson also is now on our eMedia VA system, so those lessons can be accessed anytime by any teacher or parent or student. So eMedia VA is a service we've been providing for about eight years or so now, as a request from the school divisions. It is a digital repository of learning objects. All of these learning objects are correlated to the Virginia Standards of Learning. Uh, we partner with, uh, national organizations like the Smithsonian, National Archives, Library of Congress, but probably more importantly, we partner with local organizations throughout Virginia to provide great content that's free to every public, private homeschooler in Virginia. All of your teachers, all of your parents, all of your students get access to this content through eMedia VA. We're at about a hundred eighty thousand learning objects, and this can be a video, uh, audio, game, and app a lesson plan, anything that's digital, and that can be used, especially during the pandemic, uh, in the, in the, in the virtual classroom or in person, here's a little, uh, more information.
EMedia VA is Virginia's premier digital content library, offering one hundred and sixty thousand effective online learning objects for students K through twelve. Teachers and parents enhance students' coursework and confidence today at eMediaVA.org.
We have a contract with the Department of Education to provide this service free of charge to everybody in the state, and we've seen, especially during the pandemic, huge usage of these digital learning objects, uh, throughout, by teachers throughout the Commonwealth. Um, we also make sure it works well with, within your, uh, school divisions, you know, single sign-on options, uh, LTI integrations, we work, uh, with multiple learning management systems, Canvas, Schoology, uh, ClassLink, etc. And this year especially, we've been doing a lot of training around eMedia VA, as teachers really need to have digital content available for kids. So more than twelve hundred educators so far this year have taken part in, uh, trainings on eMedia VA. Um, Martha Reads is a service we started up with a pandemic kit, uh, Martha. Um, Martha Reads is a service we started up with a pandemic kit. Uh, Martha Raiser, who runs our children's services, uh, uh, department. Uh, she reads a story written by children from the region. These are kids who write stories between first and fifth grade, kindergarten, first to fifth grade. And she reads them every Friday to Facebook Live. Of course, they're all archived. Martha's done about 36 of these. I think that's how many weeks we've been in the pandemic. And they're available again for children to have story times read to them. Very popular, about 6,000 people every week are, are watching these stories. We do a lot of professional development for our teachers. We do have special topic forums. As you can see there, we have, um, professional development through our teacher line service where teachers can get graduate credit or recertification. And this year, of course, we've done a lot of professional development, uh, by the request of the superintendents on teaching at a distance. So we've had lots of teachers. We just had a large, uh, session just this week, in fact, with teachers from around the, around the Commonwealth, uh, and helping them be better teachers online. We're pretty well-known for our online courses. We've developed for you as an owner, uh, 27 online high school courses. You can see the, the list there. They are your core high school curriculum. Think of us as the manufacturer. We make the courses and then we give them to you. These are courses that are meant to be used with teachers. Um, but especially now during the pandemic, these courses are getting used a great deal. Again, we just make them and you use them however you want. These courses are, you can edit them however you, the division, uh, wants. But, um, we are, um, proud to be able to provide you all these courses at, uh, within the fee that you pay each year. We do sell these courses to divisions who are not part of the WHRO ownership family, uh, about $10,000 per course. So you're, you're, uh, doing pretty well getting those courses free. And we, we want to make sure, of course, the courses are the highest quality. So we work with organizations like Quality Matters to make sure that, um, they are the highest quality courses you can possibly get. Virtual Virginia, of course, has been a widely used this year during the pandemic. We operate the technical side of Virtual Virginia. We have since day one. Um, and so we're, we're the operation that keeps Virtual Virginia in operation. Um, we've seen, of course, huge increases this year during the pandemic. Um, you, you probably know this because you're one of the 16 school divisions that are testing the new African-American history course. We have been working with the Governor's Commission as well as the Department of Education, and we produced the state's first African-American history course. Uh, as you can see there, Portsmouth is one of the 16 divisions in the Commonwealth, teaching the course this year. It will then be available to all school divisions in, uh, Virginia next year, but a year in the middle of, of teaching that course as we speak. And that was produced, uh, here at WHRO. Um, we do a lot for children's services, in children's services. We want to make sure our youngest children get great opportunities to learn. Of course, not just with our television stations, but things like our PBS Kids Writers Contest. This is for kid, for, uh, children, uh, K through five. They write and illustrate stories. In a normal year, we'd have bring them all together, all the winners together, and we'd make a TV show out of the celebration this year. Of course, it had to be online. But I'll refer back to Martha Reads. The stories that are written during this writers contest are the stories that we read during Martha Reads. Uh, and they do some amazing stories. Uh, we've been doing the spelling bee now for, this will be the 14th year coming up in a few weeks. Uh, there will be a spelling bee this year. So schools throughout the region, middle schools, six through eight, have done their bees. For the most part, they're done. The regional bee will be done online, uh, and I think it's the 14th of February. And then the winner of that will go on to the national spelling bee, which there will be, I do believe that will be virtual as well. But, uh, uh, hopefully we'll be back next year in person in the building, but this year we'll be doing it, uh, virtually. And hopefully we're going to have a champion one of these years at the spelling bee. The Great Computer Challenge, maybe some of you were a part of it when you were in school because it's been going on for almost 35 years now. Children K through 12 participate in software programming and languages in, in a competition team format. Um, we have a junior division that is elementary school, then we have the senior division, middle and high school. This year we're going to combine it all. It's going to be an online, uh, uh, event because of course we can't get together. Normally we would be an ODU for the weekend and the kids often get, it's the first chance to be on a college campus for any length of time. So again, the Great Computer Challenge has been going on for almost 35 years, um, and we'll keep it going. Uh, some of you are an age as I am, that you remember Schoolhouse Rock, where we learned civics on TV by watching, uh, illustrations with, with music. Well, we're doing the same thing. We did, uh, 12 stories, 12 animations, if you will, in, in the environment and the, uh, health space with a series called Health Beats. Now we have a series called Green Beats with about another dozen videos. Here's a quick sampling. I'm not going to play the whole thing, but here's a sampling. Uh, and all of these videos, there's about two dozen available, are on our FTP site, and you can use them within your classes, morning announcements, however you so choose. But here's a sampling, working with local musicians and our animators. I'm not going to play the whole thing, but as you can imagine, there's, again, 12 of these videos in, in the environmental space and, and 12 in the health space. And again, they're on our FTP site. Schools have been informed where they are, and you can use them however you so choose. Um, we of course have three, well, I say this, we have two vans with a third, they'll be on the road soon. We have a literacy van, you know, a STEM van, and we will soon have an environmental si- science van. That van is being wrapped as we speak. And these vans go out to work with, uh, elementary schools, daycare providers, in teaching literacy, teaching STEM, teaching environmental science. And they're going out, even though there's a pandemic, we're being safe with how we've worked with, uh, various organizations and schools to get, to help our youngest kids, um, enjoy learning. Um, we, again, we, we provide lots of books to children. We have a first books program, uh, that's important. We might want to make sure that continues. We're working with libraries and everybody else. Uh, in the, uh, impact statement that we provided, the hard copy on page 13, as board members, what you care about is your investment in the station. Last year, the school year ending in 2020, you invested $34,000 in WHRO, and you received in value of savings over $650,000 in the return, uh, savings in value. That's a nine, uh, 19 to one return on your investment. Uh, with that, I am happy to take any questions you may have. I'll stop sharing my screen.
Thanks so much, Mr. Schmidt. Uh, board members, do you have any questions at this time? All right, thank you.
I have a que-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a question. And this, I guess this is more a question for Dr. Wen. It's about the African-American Studies class. Um, do we know about how many students have taken it or are taking it and how it's being marketed to them?
Um, I know that we do have students who are taking it. I don't know the exact number. Uh, Mr. Hicks, uh, as a matter of fact, with social studies will be presenting next month. So perhaps we can give you a report on that, uh, next month and give you some updates with student input.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Heinz?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a follow-up on Dr. Whitaker's question, because I know we've had African-American studies for a while. Um, is the difference that the previous one we had was a Portsmouth Public Schools curriculum, and this is a state curriculum?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This was a state. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions or comments?
Yes, Ms. Atkinson. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, wait, wait, Ms. Atkinson, then Ms. Thomas is after you.
Okay, to piggyback, piggyback. Um, is, is this an elective still or, um, it's not?
It is an elective course for social studies. Um, and again, um, it's interesting because Mr. Hicks had already indicated that he would be reporting to the board on this next month and having a couple of students talk about it. So we can provide you lots of details and hopefully, uh, give you more insight, um, when, uh, and get it directly from the students. But it is a pilot course for the state, and we are one of the 16, uh, school divisions, and it was voluntary. So we, we volunteered to do that, uh, because we wanted to be on the forefront of this new coursework.
Gotcha. So to, to get it as a, one of the required courses, um, for history, that's more so on the state level?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I will definitely be emailing them.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Burt Schmidt, for the presentation. This was very helpful, um, because, you know, you hear about some of the programs, but you don't know about all of them, me personally, right? So, um, I was wondering, do we know, and this might be for Dr. Wen as well, but do we know, like, overall with all the programs available, what's our usage for Portsmouth, like which programs are we, or which resources are being utilized more? Which ones are we not really seeing a lot of participation in? Like, do we kind of have a good feeling, maybe we could improve usage of some? Like, are we using that computer program or, like, are students participating in the, I think it was called Martha's Read? Where they write their own story? Like, do we know across the board how we're using those services?
We typically keep data for each of the programs that we utilize with our students. Um, and that's one of the, um, ways that we determine whether or not a program is being effective. And so right now we know that we use a lot of the product, products that WHRO offers. Uh, we have some of their courses loaded in Schoology for our teachers to use their resources. Uh, we also have students who are taking courses with them, and we do take advantage of their resources, just as we do with everything else. So anything that we use, yes, we do have data on it, uh, for programs that we purchase, um, such as, um, I'm drawing a blank right now. Our preschool, um, program with Waterfoot. Uh, we get data from Waterfoot each month and they, um, meet with us. Um, all of the programs meet with us, Apex, Waterfoot, Waterfoot. Um, we get information from Virtual Virginia. So yes, we do maintain a log of how many students take, uh, participate in it, and also how many teachers access it, and we can look at it by school, by, and by teacher and by student.
I will know that the impact statement we provided you is customized to Portsmouth. So within that report, there are some details, not all the details, because some of the stuff we just give to you and you use, and we don't have that data. But when we have data, we customize the report specifically for, for the division.
Right, thank you.
I have one more question. I, um, are these courses available for parents to take? For example, someone wanted to use the African-American history course. Can they have access to that?
You want me to, I, I don't want to jump on anybody, but I'm pretty sure the Department of Education does not want the African-American history course taught by somebody who's not well-versed in how to teach that course.
No, I was asking, yeah, no, I was asking if you're a parent, um, you know, through WHRO, can, are you someone that can take the course? Not teach it, but actually-
Oh, take the course?
Yes.
Well, we provide the courses to the division, so the division will decide how that policy. All, all education policies are made by you folks, not by us.
So I guess this was a question for Dr. Wen.
Whether or not these courses are available for parents. Um, we would have to look at that through our adult education programs. Um, since this is a course right now that is authorized through WHRO and the curriculums with WHRO. I don't know that we would be able to, to make this course available to parents, but there may be other things that we can look at possibly throughout adult and continuing education classes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Were there any other questions? Thank you again, Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Seward, for your presentation. And for any other board members that may have questions or, uh, ideas of partnerships, uh, with WHRO. Uh, Ms. Atkinson is your representative on the board for WHRO, and Ms. Williams is the alternate for that. But thank you, gentlemen, again, for joining us on tonight.
Thanks so much. Take care.
And board members, if you're giving a delivery to backtrack to six, to 6.2, I do see Ms. Harden is back with us, so you can continue her presentation. It's all right.
Uh, yes, sorry about that. My internet went down. Um, so I can just pick back up without having to, or here we go. So I think I was right in the middle of telling you guys about how GAZB 95 extended most new guidance by one year. Um, so that was implemented in the financial, in the financial statements. There are some items that are considered to be accounting estimates, and this means that those numbers are subject to change based on the underlying information, um, that goes into those, um, estimates. And the most significant estimates for the school, school division's CAFER is the allowance for doubtful accounts for, um, accounts receivable. In addition, there are some actuarially computed liabilities, um, most significant, the pension and OPEB liabilities, as well as depreciation expense, um, in relation to capital assets. So, um, based on the information that goes into making those estimates, they can change from year to year. Then, um, I am also happy to tell you there were no uncorrected misstatements or material audit adjustments as a result of our audit procedures. You can move to the next slide. I'm also happy to report that we did not have any disagreements with management during our audit. We also did not encounter any difficulties in performing the audit. And we're not aware that the school division had any, um, consultations with other accountants. Uh, next slide, please. On December 18th of 2020, we did provide a representation letter to, um, the school division. In, in this letter, it basically just, uh, has them represent to us that they responded truthfully, provided us all documents that we needed in, um, in the course of the audit. We are also independent of the school division, uh, which means we don't have, we're not aware of any relationship that would impair our independence in providing you a, um, independent audit opinion. There are a couple of items in the financial statements, uh, management's discussion and analysis, and required supplementary information that we do not provide an opinion on. Um, and then there is other supplementary information in the CAFER that we provide in, in relation to opinion, which means that we've agreed those items back to the audited statements. Um, at the end of the presentation, I do just have some future accounting and reporting changes. Um, if you move forward two slides, please. Um, the one that's going to be most significant is GAZB statement number 84 in relation to fiduciary activities. And in this, um, standard, the school division will need to do an analysis to determine whether or not, uh, the school activity fund should be reported as a fiduciary activity. The other big standard that is coming up, um, is in fiscal year 2022, is going to be GAZB statement number 87, which is the lease standard. And this essentially takes all leases and records them as a financing lease. Um, and will bring a asset and a liability onto the financial statements for those items. So previously, anything that would have been reported as an operating lease would have been expensed during the year and wouldn't have any related asset or liability on the financials. And those, that is going to be a big change and a big undertaking for the, for the finance department. Um, and really, those are the two items that I did want to point out to you. I would like to thank Mr. Falk and Ms. Harris for all of their assistance during the audit. Um, because, uh, it is a very long process and very, um, time-consuming for them and their staff. Um, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you so much again, Ms. Harden. Do we have any, uh, questions or comments from board members at this time? And, and I will say, Mr. Falk, if you can just keep the finance committee, um, abreast of the accounting and reporting changes, uh, that you all will be, um, enduring, and they will keep us informed on their reporting periods also for that.
Will do.
Thank you, sir. If there's no other discussion or questions, thank you again, Ms. Harden, for joining us on this evening.
Chairman.
Agenda item 6.4 is an athletic update. At our last meeting, I believe it was Dr. Whitaker, she wanted a report, uh, from our athletics director on where we are with our sports program. So Mr. Pugh will now, uh, present his report at this time.
Good evening, school board members. Uh, Dr. Bracy, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chairwoman Atkinson. When we met on December 10th, I mentioned that we were prepared, uh, to pause our activities of health metrics, which are worsening. On Denver's, December 16th, we decided to pause our athletic activities until January 4th, when we could reevaluate that decision. Um, when the new year began on January 4th, we decided the health metrics of cases per 100,000 residents and positivity rates had more than doubled from the time when we decided to pause. We then decided to pause for one week to determine that the health measures would turn in a positive direction. As health, excuse me, as health measures continue to worsen, we decided on January 13th, uh, to cancel all winter sports for the 2021, uh, school year. To cancel all winter sports for the twenty twenty-one school year. We decided however, to continue with Scholastic Bowl, because that is being contested virtually and not face to face. And and right now, we have Churchland who is a compete Churchland High School who's competing in Scholastic Bowl. We understand the level of disappointment that our students and athletes feel, especially our seniors. So we have instructed our coaches to continue to meet virtually. With our athletes on a weekly basis to provide the social and emotional support that they're desperately in need of. There will be also opportunities outside of school sports, such as club teams and senior showcases. For our seniors, so they could still, if they win a winner sport, they could still get out there and and and. Get out in front of some colleges and people can see them and still get opportunity to to go to school and get some money for it. Our next step would be to access to safety, conduct in fall sports. Which have already been moved to February by the Virginia High School League. And they're slated to start February fourth and fifteenth. We will use the same process to evaluate and assess the health measures to drive our decisions. To work with our regional partners while planning. Most of the fall sports are outdoors, which mean that we can conduct them probably safely, more safer than we can. Using indoor facilities except for volleyball. Which gives us hope that we can safely conduct our practices and games if the health method supported. We will have to decide on when the practices can begin and again, we will be prepared to pause if necessary. Our intent is to offer all high school sports for the fall. And to continue to put middle school sports on hold until they are back in school face to face. We will continue to follow the guidance from the Virginia High School League and the Virginia Department of Health to safely conduct our athletic programs. We will be deciding within the next week or two on when the spring sports can begin conditioning. As well as, you know, their sports are contested outdoors, so we feel that the spring is what. Last year seniors missed, and if at all cost, we want to make sure that we can preserve this, the spring season. For the seniors this year. So I'll open the floor up to any questions that you may have. Hopefully I can answer.
Okay, Ms. Atkinson first, then Ms. Hines and Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, Mr. Pugh. I know this year has been challenging for every sport. My first question is, I did see that Virginia Beach. So was that under the guidance of Virginia High School League? Or was it that other schools were willing to participate and play?
Okay, so the Virginia High School League looks at the whole state, it's three hundred and three hundred and three schools in the state. So their guidance is, they put out guidance with the CDC saying, how can we do it safely? And knowing that every region is different with regard to the spread in the community. They let the local school divisions make the decision on whether you want to participate or not. And in our region, we only have York County, Virginia Beach, and Isle of Wight. Who are participating in sports, so all the other, all the other school divisions locally. Have decided to cancel winter sports. Does that answer your question?
Gotcha, so it is safe to say that that no other schools would have participated, so.
Yes, see, well, Virginia Beach is, Virginia Beach is their own district as well as their own city. So they didn't have to consult like what we had to do, yeah. So they decided to, and they and they only play each other, so.
Right, right. I I I understand Hasbrook and that. I just, I just wanted to make sure because I did get some, some questions and. About, hey, I see Virginia Beach is having basketball games, why can't we have basketball games? So I I just wanted to get that on the record. Also regarding the the showcase, the upcoming senior showcases, will college scouts be at those senior showcases?
Well, I'll be honest with you, in during the pandemic, I can't answer yes or no. Typically, they are, so I would, I would imagine some would be there and some would see the videos. And would would have access to those recruiting networks during during this year. So, you know, in the past, I could tell you, yes, but at this point, you know, I don't know if some will come out or or some will not.
And I just wanted to make sure we were extending the invite to scholars, to the scouts. And it just wasn't just like a open type of showcase without any college scouts there. That's, that's where I was coming from with the question. So they have been extending invitation.
Yes. Yes, these are all done through our organizations. We just, we just push it to to our particular sports like volleyball, basketball. We push it to them and they push it to the parents and it'll be their decision whether to participate or not.
Gotcha. And and I know the the college, the athletic college commitment day is upcoming. Do you have a projected? Timeframe on when those showcases will be happening?
What, they typically happen in the spring. There are, see, it's so fluid right now because really people just pull back from the high school sports, from the winter sports. So now you got people trying to do things in February, you know, in March and that, you know. Yeah, outside of normal time when they do things, so there may be some smaller ones that may creep up here in 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 March, but. For the most part, late March, early, early April is when those things pretty much happen, typically when the spring season is going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Pugh, thank you so much. One of the questions, the main question I wanted to ask for our students who are playing on club teams. Because we are not having seasons or we're not having, you know, competition. Have we been able to help offset some of the costs for those teams? Because not all club teams are free. And I would hate for somebody to not be able to play their senior sport because they don't have a way to. To play. So have we been able to offset any cost or is there a way to offset any cost? For those students or for those parents who are having to take that club route at this time? Thank you.
Well, at this point, all of our sports are Virginia High School League sports, and that's what we fund. And Portsmouth Middle School League, so anything outside of that, we're not able to use any of our funds for that. And I will say that the club route is far more expensive for the parent than to play for the Scholastic team. There's no question about that. It's it's travel involved, they have to pay for uniforms and equipment. I mean, they have to, they have to register, pay registration everywhere they go. But for the most part, our parents who are, who, the parents who really on that track to get their kids a scholarship. They're doing that already. What hurts our kids are the inner city kids who are not connected like that and who don't have the funds to do that. And and they are, they are hurt by that and there's, but 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 our school funds cannot be used. For those outside organizations like that, so I mean, I wish we had other ways. Maybe some other community partners can can pull together. That's something that, you know, we can talk to the city about Parks and Rec and see what they can do to assist. But the school, we can't use them for that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pugh.
And Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Mr. Pugh, thank you for the report. My question was also about the senior showcases. So you said those would take place in March or April? What sports would be included in March and April?
Okay, definitely basketball, girls and boys. There is a, that football one is usually a, it's usually, it's usually three, like. They call them all-star games, but they really like showcases, and they typically happen in December. But the the football season has now been moved to February and March. So I do have one guy who already contacted me because he, he's, he does it every year in Virginia Beach. And they're looking for a site, so the these things will have to happen. The football ones will have to happen after the football season, which the football season will be ending like April sixth. So it happened, had to happen like mid-April or late April. There are volleyball, certain sport, they really club sports like volleyball and softball and lacrosse and baseball. They kind of never really stopped, so those kids get evaluated when they go to certain tournaments and things like that. But the showcases are generally like the team sports like, like with basketball and and football and volleyball. Those are typically what 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 happens in our area.
And do you know when the schedule will be out for those showcases?
As soon as they send the emails and stuff to me, I will make sure you guys are aware of it. And we get it, we get it right to the schools.
All right, and in terms of the club sports. I don't know if anyone knows if there are any grants or is there any way we could look for grants to maybe help fund? You know, participation in the club sports.
And 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 I want to add this too, like with with that comes a need for somewhere to practice. See, so, so if we have to work hand to hand with the city on it, because if the city. You know, shut down the gyms in their fields and then we're not using ours due to COVID, then. Our kids will have to travel to other cities as well for practice, so. You know, they they are, they have not made a decision as of yet, as of what they're doing with the fields, because I I do meet with them. So and I told them, I said, we need you guys to to do what some of the other cities are doing. And use your facilities to allow the clubs to actually use your facilities, so. You know, right now, there are opportunities out there, but our kids would have to either travel to Hampton or Virginia Beach to participate in them. And I I see a hand up who who could give us more detail on what's going on with that.
I have just one more question. In terms of student athletes being able to get. Video of themselves outside of maybe the showcases. Would there be any opportunity to do that so that they could, you know, send that video to recruiters?
Well, well, the showcases are like a one-time event. There have been leagues. We had a seven-on-seven football league. We have had winter basketball leagues over in, over in Hampton. I mean, and they're volleyball leagues, so people have been able to get visual contact. But they had to, like you say, pay, they had to travel, they had to do all these things to get it, so. Like, if if we're shut down, like I did get this question, Dr. Whitaker. We're shut down, but can the team still go in there and practice and get, you know, I'm like. If we shut down our gym, our gym is shut down and it's shut down for a reason, so. I mean, I really wish we could help, but as soon as this virus takes the turn that we're waiting for it to take and. More and more people, you know, it becomes safer, then I can assure you that we're going to do everything in our power that we can to help these athletes.
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna ask Mr. Pewden, then I'm gonna go to Ms. Schumake as well. Mr. Pew, Ms. Atkinson and Dr. Whitaker, they're on our corporate sponsorship committee. I I know it'll probably be a quick turnaround, but I know Ms. Atkinson personally, and I know a few videographers, they probably wouldn't mind doing training videos. As a partnership with the school division and no cost to those students. I know we don't have the the in-person. Play that they would normally have, but at least if they could do maybe some weight training videos or footage or. Training videos that could be shot at no cost to them by local videographers that may not partner with the school division, that may be an option. That we can possibly hop on pretty quickly, and of course, we can always reach out to, you know, local companies and. Churches and things that sort of, maybe they may want to sponsor a child to a club or something like that, but. I think those are some options we could possibly look at, you know, rather quickly to do something after we survey how many of our students need assistance with that.
Absolutely. I mean, just put something together, I'll meet with you and we'll get it going.
Okay, and I I'm gonna jump to Ms. Schumake and then back to Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Chairman Stilo. Great minds think alike because that that was going to be one of my suggestions as well, but I do have a question for. Coach Pew. Do we still consider you to be Coach Pew or is that a different?
A coach to somebody.
My question is, do we have a list of the properties throughout Portsmouth that's considered to be Portsmouth Public School property? And the the Portsmouth property. And I'm asking like whether it's like basketball fields, baseball fields, do we have a clear depiction of? What's considered to be school property and what's considered to be the city of Portsmouth property, if that makes any sense?
No, that makes a lot of sense. That would not be a question for me.
For you, okay.
Yeah, that would be a question for somebody on this call who who has the D's and know who owns what. And I think Jeff may be able to help us with that. Because that is, that is, that has been a a a ongoing question in the city of Portsmouth. On on these facilities and who owns what and who can do what and when they can do it and. Yes, yes, and and I I've been trying to get answers and. I I hear that the answers are down in Parks and Rec and a file cabinet, but I haven't got my hands on it. Yet, so.
Okay, is there anything that we need to do on our end to try to see if we can get a clear? Understanding of what belongs to the Portsmouth Public Schools and what belongs to the city of Portsmouth or Parks and Rec? As you just stated, is it anything that we can do on our end to help or? You know, oh, we need to talk offline, that'd be fine too, but.
It's the forum to discuss that. Yeah, you 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 give me a call, yeah, we can, we can work that out.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. You're on mute.
I do this all day long, I'm sorry. Coach Pew, I think I would like to be in on that call as well. Because I would really like to see if we can figure this out between Parks and Rec and between the school system. As a city council liaison, I think we can take that to city council and make that one of our first things to get settled. Because it it is a bone of contention, whether it's Parks and Rec or whether it's the school board stuff. And if we need to sit and come up with some clear understandings, some new MOUs, I mean, we have a whole new clean house. Let's start with a clean house, let's, you know, I I'm just all for, let's get it settled and let's move on. So I think maybe a conference call with the three of us and get a list of things together so that. Ms. Schumake and I can have conversations with our city council and see what we can get done because. It is something that needs to be cleaned up, because yeah, just case in point, little leagues around town have busted lights and have broken. You know, maybe a broken facility. The Little League calls the the school system, the school system says it's the city, the city says it's the school. And in the meantime, we have kids that can't play ball because we don't know whose is whose and what is what. So I would really like to be a part of that call as well, so maybe we'll get that scheduled for one afternoon next week. So that we can start those discussions so that when spring does open up and we are able to do what we can do. We have that clear definition, and so I'm gonna go ahead and make a phone call to Mr. Barnes or Vice Mayor Barnes and get some of the skids working there. So that we can get this accomplished, so thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Williams. Get your hand up, Ms. Williams, and then Ms. Thomas.
You know, can I, can I, before, before you move on?
Yes, sir.
Which one?
Racing wants to come in, then I'll go to you, Ms. Williams.
Oh, well, well, he's, he's probably gonna, I was gonna say before you move forward with that. I think the superintendent probably, the finance area would know. What what properties we we own and what the city owns before we start making calls. That's what I was gonna say, maybe talk with the superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Williams. You you read my mind. I'm glad to have you back because you you can help me remember more than I can, but. That's, that's what I want to say. Maybe that's something led us, looking to this, I didn't realize that it was a. An issue, I knew we had concerns, but I didn't realize that that we were at a point that we were not getting any responses. I think what we can do, let's look at it in-house first. Mr. Pew, maybe you, Dr. Simmons, Dr. Gramarty, we can get together and see what we need to do. I think we have a good relationship with with Parks and Rec that we can, we can figure this out. And then we can come back and report to the board in terms of whose properties they are, so I think we can figure this one out.
Thank you.
I would love it, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Thomas. All right, thank you so much. Uh, Ms. Thomas?
Thank you, Chairman Patillo. Hey, Coach Pew, it's so nice to talk to you and thank you for that update. Thank you, thank you. Um, I, my question is, and I was listening to the discussion about from Dr. Whittaker about the senior showcases and also board member Atkinson. And they probably know more about the high school sports and what um, you know, from Lake City School Atkinson being a sports and Dr. Whittaker having boys that have, you know, graduated and played sports as well. I just have, my question for you is, well, how does this, you know, delay in sports, how is it gonna impact athletic scholarships for our kids? And what can we do to help that? Like, how can we be proactive to help that?
All right, I I I would say this, just just like the economy and all sectors have been affected by COVID, athletics in all sectors have been affected. So what I mean, you have some college conferences that opted out of sports. So what they did was they gave the seniors an extra year. So that's another scholarship that this the class of two thousand twenty-one won't be able to get at that university. So it is it is it is all over. You you name it, it's gonna affect them. Uh, we do have college coaches out here actively recruiting. And we have some that say, oh, well, I got these seniors coming back for their extra year because of COVID. So I don't need to bring a, you know, a point guard in this year. I don't need to bring a linebacker in this year. So yes, it's gonna, it's gonna, e- everything goes downhill and that's that's exactly what's happening right now when it comes to recruit. You know, and 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 short of saying, uh, you know, the private schools like to go and um the private schools in our area like what they call reclassify, you know, take a eighth grader and let them do the eighth grade over again so they could um, you know, so that they'd be graduating in nineteen and they'd be bigger and it they will have, you know, an extra year to to try to do that. You know, I I've always totally been against that because just because of the emotional growth of of the student, but some of those kids may be benefiting from what's actually happening with this year not being a year where recruiting is not on the level that it was the previous year. So it has been a effect. Um, so I mean, this, I mean, we all, we all with this. And some kids may get missed. Uh, other kids may be have preferred walk-on opportunities. Other kids may have to walk on themselves to try to uh to try to earn, you know, to earn a scholarship. So this is just another effect of the pandemic.
Thank you, Coach Pew. Yeah, worried about those kids, but like you said, I don't know the answer to how we can help it, but like you said, it's across the board. So I'll be thinking about that. Thank you.
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, not to belabor the point, but I think this is where um being able to help students get video and put together some type of um stat sheet or dossier or something to send to recruiters becomes critical because if uh coaches are not traveling as they um typically would and you can send a coach um video and information about yourself, that, you know, sometimes that helps you stand out in terms of being recruited. And I know um, you know, for for our sons, um, you know, being able to contact schools um was crucial in terms of them getting recruited um, you know, in track and then in basketball also. So I think, you know, I think we have to be very aggressive in trying to help these students um, you know, who would otherwise um re- would have received athletic scholarships had it not been for the pandemic.
Yeah, and I will say this, uh, um, college recruiting has is has pretty much now moved uh towards social media and Twitter is like the number one way where college recruiters are recruiting athletes nowadays. So basically what they do is that they'll reach out to the parent or to the coach, to the high school coach or to the kid on Twitter. And you can send them their stats, you can get the height, the weight, the size. We do have core course GPA that we purchase so that any of our kids, they they can go right online and they can see what their core course GPA is and the colleges can see that. So that is one tool that we use through Goddard's uh to be able to help our kids so that there's no ambiguity with determining whether they're eligible or not for the NCAA. Uh, so uh, so what I'm saying is like, the coaches really want to see you, they you know this, yeah, they want to see your size, they want to see your, you know, they want to know your, they want to know those stats. You know, not necessarily how many points you score. They want to know your height, your weight. So what what's happening now is that Twitter is such so responsive that they're reaching out to the high school coach and the coach can send them that information just right away. And then we can say, we also have core course GPA, we can send them a link to that that kids uh and it'll let them know exactly what their core GPA is right away. So we 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 are, we are up to date when it come to technology and we get that information out as rapidly as possible. And they use a cell phone video, iPad video. I mean, they there are a lot of means of actually getting the word out now that we didn't have six to ten years ago. And that information moving pretty quickly now. So I feel confident that all our schools are using those mediums and they're using them as much as they can to the to the uh benefit of our students. And I will continue to make sure that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Coach Pew, and thank you for giving your time and your energy. I'm not gonna uh belabor um the the subject matter, but it it seems that the pandemic has uh unveiled uh, I think, new uh opportunities and of growth for our school division, especially when it comes to athletics. Uh, right now, the the one thing that's popping in my mind is that there needs to be some serious mentoring going on um with our athletes and with their families who may not know the routes to take. Uh, proper usage of Twitter and social media, if God is gonna be looking at those, um, how to get your information put on your Twitter page and get it out there. So I think there's a lot that the pandemic has shown us that we need to to grow uh when it comes to our student athletes. But thank you. I know all of our coaches are overworking the page like our staff, so uh our other staff. So thank you for all that you all are doing. And um we look forward to working together to make these things a reality for our children.
Well, I I appreciate the time and uh and commitment that the board has given to this. I really do, and I know the parents do as well.
Thank you, sir.
Chair Patillo.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Atkinson, I see.
Just just one more thing, since the the athletics is is fluid across the board with COVID, I just would like to, and maybe I'll I'll send the email to have Mr. Pew kind of like give like a monthly update on athletics until, you know, everything is is back to square one.
Yeah, you just, I ma- make sure you shoot something to Dr. Bracy uh in reference to that, so he can work with Mr. Pew and get that, get something on uh on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
All right, then, no further discussion on that. Thank you again, uh, Mr. Pew. And we're now gonna have as budget season's upon us, so we're now gonna have Mr. Falk give us a brief update uh on our budget.
Good evening again, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy. Uh, again, as as Chairman Patillo said, it's budget time. Uh, at this time of the year, we work with a lot of stakeholders across the division, outside the division, to try to get the needs of the division and get information as to how to formulate a efficient and an effective budget that meets the needs of this school division uh for that next fiscal year and beyond. Uh, in the next few weeks, you will see that Dr. Bracy's uh superintendent estimate of needs will be presented at the uh school board meeting in February, the first one, and that'll give you more specific details about the process. Tonight, my my goal is to give you some information with a general overview of revenue and the financial climate that we're experiencing at state and local levels, um, given the pandemic that we're in. Um, as you're aware, the governor presented his budget on December the sixteen uh twenty twenty. Uh, obviously legislators have the ability to change some of the proposals that he has, so we're closely watching what's going on in Richmond uh a- and beyond in the federal government as well. And with that, we're gonna try to put together the best budget we can. Um, and if Dean, you have the slides up uh available, you could pop that up for me.
Yes, sir.
You can go to the second slide. Thank you. So tonight, we're going to talk about uh three different areas. One, the governor's amended by a budget. Obviously, the state does a two-year budget. This will be the second year of that budget. Um, secondly, giving you a local revenue outlook of what the city has provided to us in an estimate. Um, and then thirdly, the budget calendar for this year, how this process will all flow from now until May. Next slide, please. As I said, um, twenty twenty-one is twenty twenty-one, twenty-two is the second year of the BNIAM. That is important because in the second year of the BNIAM, there's normally not as much new money as it is in the first year of the BNIAM. In the first year of the BNIAM, the state rebenchmarks, which means they set all the estimates um to new ones based on the last averages that they have. So usually, usually there's a lot more new money in the first year than the second year. Um, secondly, they also do updates to average daily membership and fall membership every year. That is critical this year because of a lot of the enrollment loss that has happened throughout the state. I will talk a little more about that in detail in a in a minute or two. But um just know that those updates, because when you do your budget, your budget is is promulgated and estimated based on enrollment as well as your local composite index, which is the index that the state uses of the ability of that locality to pay. So they're two of the most important determinants in your budget. Um, the governor put his budget out, he had a ser- several initiatives, and I'll try to give you a snapshot of those that are most important to us. Uh, the first one, eh, he put in a one-time two percent bonus payment, and I I stress bonus for SOQ-funded positions effective September first of twenty twenty-one. So basically, the state budget will fund a two percent bonus for SOQ-funded positions. Uh, many of you that have gone through this before and for our newer board members, when the state provides money for a bonus or a raise, they only give it to us for SOQ-funded positions, not all our positions. Obviously, we provide a raise to all of our employees. The caveat in this um proposal says that we have to give this bonus to everybody, which we would anyway, but they don't fund the whole thing. So I want to make sure that that's clear to to you guys as well as the public, that even though the governor says he's gonna give us a two percent bonus, it's only for those positions that they fund within SOQ. Um, the second initiative that he's put forward, last year, the governor put this initiative forward and it was cut from the budget at the last minute due to the pandemic, the revenue not being there. They wanted to increase the SOQ funding for all school counselor, for school counselors at a ratio of three hundred and twenty-five students to one. Just to give you some some clarity on that, right now, the the ratios are um four fifty-five, four fifty-five to one at elementary, three seventy to one at middle school, and three twenty-five to one at high school. So this will make a big difference in our elementary schools and middle schools to get more counselors to help our students uh when we when we do return. Um, and w- we hope that it stays in this year because it's a much-needed area with our social and emotional needs that we will have when we come back even now. Uh, next slide, Dean. Um, they also had this initiative uh for the Virginia Preschool Initiative, which is our early childhood program last year that they cut. They were increasing the per pupil amount from six thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars to seven thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars per per pupil. So they have included that back in the budget, which will give us more money to provide to our early childhood VPI program. And then lastly, the last one, and this is the biggest of of the budget in my opinion, mainly because of where we are with enrollment loss. They're calling it no-loss funding uh due to COVID. What that means is most school divisions, based on our estimate of our budget, we estimate based on uh enrollment. Last year in the twenty twenty-one budget, we estimated that we would have thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy-seven students uh in our budget. Well, obviously, COVID has changed that estimate uh for us. And so now, in the state budget, the new estimate, if I can grab it, is now twelve thousand seven hundred, excuse me, twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-six students. That's for twenty twenty-one. And so what that would have meant is that we would have lost a lot of revenue based on that enrollment loss. So what the state did was step in and said, we will hold you harmless for your enrollment loss. And we will pro- provide funding to make you whole because it's not your fault that you lost the student. So in twenty twenty-one, they're gonna hold us harmless for any enrollment loss and give us enrollment based on what we had projected before. In twenty twenty-two, it's up to the General Assembly as to how they manage that. We've heard that there they may do it for twenty twenty-two or they may reset it going forward uh next year. So we're waiting to see what happens in twenty twenty-two. But in twenty twenty-one, we're whole harmless for any enrollment loss. So we will receive all of the revenue that we had budgeted from the state uh for that program. Next slide, Dean. The local revenue outlook. Um, as you, as you know, last year, the city uh passed a funding formula to fund uh the school division, and it set out this uh complicated formula to to fund the school divisions. So we provided, they provided us with the preliminary estimate of that revenue calculation for this year uh for FY twenty-one, twenty-two, which would be the first year of that calculation. That that estimate is fifty-seven million, six hundred fifty-four thousand nine sixty-four, that which represents an increase of nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand two sixty-eight over the current year's uh final budget number. We will continue to work with the city on on this process. The final estimate is due to us by March the first, by them as per the funding formula guidelines. And we will continue to work with them to make sure that there are no major changes in that. As our budget is presented, as of right now, we will use that fifty-seven point six million dollar uh number to uh formulate the superintendent's estimate of needs. Dean, next slide. And lastly, here are budget calendar dates just to give the public and the school board a listing of kind of how this process works. It's a long process. Um, as I said, on the fourth, we're gonna present the superintendent's estimate of needs. Uh, on February the eighteenth, we will have a public hearing on the FY twenty-one, twenty-two proposed budget uh where the public can weigh in on uh the initiatives that we have set for for anything that they would want to see in the budget. Um, the February twenty-second, a joint meeting with city council is scheduled at this time. General Assembly, it's it's kind of weird this year because it was supposed to be a short session and they've kind of bannered around whether they're gonna have a short session or a long session. So right now, we're looking mid to late March to get the final uh General Assembly adopted state budget numbers. But obviously, depending on how they manage this session, it may be that time or it may be later. Um, after, a- at that point, um, March eighteenth, we will approve the um FY twenty-one, twenty-two proposed operating budget. And then the following day, we will submit that to the city uh manager for um uh his his review and um inclusion in the city's budget. On March, on March twenty-second, the city manager will present the proposed budget to city council. I checked that date today to make sure that it was still on the same plane as it normally is, and it and it is, they're gonna present on the twenty-second. Um, obviously, there will be a lot of work between the twenty-second and May eleventh, when city, the city council adopts um their their budget. And then on May twentieth, uh, we will come back and have the adoption of our twenty-one, twenty-two operating. So with that said, uh, that is concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Sorry, I don't have any time, Ms. Hines. But uh, Ms. Schumake and then Ms. Hines.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Patillo. I actually don't have a question. I just want to say thank you so much, uh, Mr. Falk, for all of your hard work. You mentioned in the very beginning that there were some unfunded um pieces of the budget. And I just want to encourage the public to uh write to your your local delegate and your senator. Um, the House Education SOQ and SOL Subcommittee just voted twenty-one to zero about those particular programs that are unfunded. And its delegate airs uh HB one nine two nine. It's the bill that's going to be presented. And it's about all of the programs that he stated that are currently unfunded. So if you write them and let them know to vote yes, um, we wouldn't have this problem moving forward, hopefully. So thank you again, Mr. Falk. And again, you know, And again, you know, I encourage everyone to reach out to your senators and your delegates to let them know to vote yes for HB one nine two nine. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And also, along with that, Mr. Tillage and I believe Ms. Williams is on our legislative committee also. And if they can also reach out on behalf of the board to our local representatives in reference to unfunded mandates also trying to be put upon the school division, that'd be great.
Okay, Chairman, you said that was HB one nine two nine? Was that right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, yes, ma'am. And it's sponsored by Delegate Airs.
Okay, okay, thanks. I will.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Falk, it's always a pleasure to hear from you. I want to just refer back quickly to the CAFR presentation with no findings. You and your staff have always done a good job. And I just want to, having a husband that does finance as well, the minute you, the minute we vote on a budget, you go into an audit of another budget. So literally, you're working in three budgets at one time. For those people that don't understand what that means, that means you would have a lot more gray hair than you would have normally, nine times out of ten, if you did budget. So I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Falk, for your professionalism, for your staff. For the two or, how many years have you been with us now? Three years now?
Two, a little over two.
Well, I love you so much. I think you've been here longer than that. So we've never had, we've never had an issue. It's always been professional. You keep us straight. And I really just want to give a big shout out to you. And as we go into this budget season, last budget season was a yo-yo budget. This, and I don't even know what to call this one this year, you know? So, and there have been years where we haven't got a general assembly number until after we have adopted our own budgets. So just thank you for what you do. Thank you and your staff for keeping us straight. And I look forward to going through this budget season again with you as well, sir. So thank you and thank your staff. Thank you, Dr. Bracy, for finding Dr. Falk for us so that we can rest easy when it comes to our money and our CAFR.
Thank you. And also, we're to probably answer many questions also that Dr. Bracy will be scheduling appointments with each of you to get your desires for the budget as well. So make sure you actually start jotting down your ideas and your needs, what you think is needed for the school division. And he'll be making those appointments with you within a coming week. Mr. Parent?
Yes, I just wanted to, the Budget Finance Committee met. Mrs. Thomas and I met with Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk and his staff. And one of the things, you've covered most of the things. But one of the things, Mr. Falk, you might want to bring to the board because I think it was kind of, when you got the email, I think you were a little shocked. And that's the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act, which is going to be somewhere around twenty million dollars that can be, has to be spent by September twenty twenty-three, which can possibly, and more information will be coming concerning our HVAC and indoor quality. Mr. Falk, do you want to elaborate a little bit? Because I think when you first looked at the email, you thought, well, maybe that's two million dollars. But when you went back and you saw that it was twenty, a little over twenty million dollars, it was kind of kind of good.
Sure, sure. Yes, back on January the eleventh, we got an email. If you recall, back at the end of December, Congress passed another coronavirus or CARES Act relief bill. This one is entitled, "The Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations." The acronym is CRS-A. As I told them, I'm tired of acronyms, but we're going to just keep adding them on if they keep giving us money. The allocations to school for this particular funding, I think Virginia got about nine hundred and thirty-nine million dollars, just to give you a magnitude of what that is. The allocation for PPS was twenty million, seven ninety-seven, five fifty-four. As Mr. Parent said, I thought there was a zero, extra zero in there somewhere. But when they put this budget together, the Congress, they put a lot of money into schools to make sure that we could have the relief we needed to get kids back in school, to provide the supports we needed, so on and so forth. One of the unique parts of this bill is that they have actually allowed some school facility upgrades in relation to HVACs, windows, things of that nature to prevent the spread of disease by upgrades. We haven't gotten a lot of detail since this has come out. So I'm hesitant to say what you can do, what you can do, because we haven't gotten a lot of detail on the back office side of this. But just know, there's about twenty point eight million dollars that'll be available to really help us recover from this pandemic. And I shared it with the Finance Committee when it was hot off the press. And we haven't gotten any more updates from the state. But as we get them, we will make sure that you guys are aware of where we are with this and what the planning is going to be. This is going to be a wholesale, widespread planning that's going to be cross-functional throughout the division because we're going to have to really look at what we need as we go forward, coming out of this pandemic from an instructional perspective, from an operational perspective, from a facility. So.
Mr. Falk, it was my understanding that, and I don't want city council to think that this cannot supplant what is in the capital, in the CIP, in their CIP budget because they're in charge of that. This money should not supplant, that's my understanding, is that correct?
That is correct. This is, these are additional appropriations, and they shouldn't be looked upon as they will replace anything that you already were doing. This is for supplemental help to help you get back up to speed based on what the pandemic has done to our operating since then. So yeah, you are correct, Mr. Parent. It won't supplant any other funding. All the funding that we were supposed to get should still stay in place.
And the other thing, I just want the board to realize that Ms. Thomas can chime in because part of this city revenue outlook may look good at this point. But we, as a board, may have to include the fleet maintenance and the ground maintenance because although that's extra money and it looks good to see that fifty-seven point six million, but if we have to, we may have to do RFPs to take care of our fleet maintenance and take over the ground maintenance. And that's going to be something that may just grab that extra money because then it becomes our responsibility to take that over. Mr. Falk, you might want to address that as well.
And what I want to, and also, next meeting, the work session, we want all of our committees to, that have met, to make their reports at the work session. And I just want to make sure that we, because it's a lot coming at us now, coming at us now from finance. If it will be okay, Mr. Falk, if you and the Finance Committee, once you get your updates, if you all can make a full report at the work session, and that would help us out with our budget plan as well. And so the board can get a full understanding of everything that's happening from the finance point of view, if that's okay.
That's fine. I was just bringing it up because of the, of his update on the, as we begin the budget process, that this is part of what the thinking is at this moment. So, yeah, that's fine.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Thomas, you had your hand raised as well?
Yes, I'm not going to belabor the point because we'll work definitely with school board member Parent and also, Mr. Falk, thank you so much. My first committee meeting was excellent. I appreciate the, how Mr. Falk just broke everything down in layman's terms. It really made it a point to make sure I had a good understanding of the process. So I want to say thank you there. And also, Chairman Patillo, you just kind of answered part of my question why I originally raised my hand regarding that we're going to have one-on-one meetings set up to express our needs. But I'm already getting some questions from the public regarding budgets. So I know we have the public hearing on February eighteenth, right? Is that correct? Okay. Do we encourage the public then? And I want to put that out there that if the public wants to email us or contact any board member with what they want to see or what's important to them. I mean, I know we all have our own priorities that we want to see to make the school better. But the public and our staff and teachers, I want to just throw that out there. They can contact all, any of their school board members so that we can take their needs into consideration as well.
Yeah, they absolutely can contact school board members. And what we also do, that we would love to have participation for participating in the survey that we put out every year to help gather their ideas in order for them to prepare a budget. And many of our citizens do participate in it. But we always encourage more of our citizens to do that. That way, it's not going through board members to the staff. They get into the staff directly, and that alleviates the middleman. But yes, they are more than welcome to contact board members with their suggestions also as well.
Chairman Patillo?
Yes, sir, Dr. Bracy.
And we will be meeting with the board members. We will meet in groups of twos. So we'll get those meetings scheduled. We'll send the Zoom invites out. So be on the lookout for that sometime next week.
All right, thank you so much.
Chairman Patillo?
Yes, Ms. Akerson?
If we are done with finance, the finance part, I was going to say I didn't see a section for our student representative to do their report on our agenda.
Yeah, I was going to ask, yeah.
So I don't know if I need to make a motion. I will go ahead and do that if we wanted to do it before six point six or after. But I will happily make that motion so we can hear from our student representative.
We did check with him prior to finalizing the agenda, and he didn't have a report to make for this month. That's why we didn't, we didn't forget about him, though.
Okay.
Important part of us, and we did check to make sure.
Okay.
All right. There are no more questions in reference to the budget discussion. We'll move to item six point six. The School Marquee in Resonia RFP update. I believe Ms. Hines wanted to update on this for this week. And the Operation Technology Committee, we met with the staff to go over this. So I'm going to throw Mr. Tillage out there, let him make our report on behalf of the committee.
All right, well, thank you, Chair. As Chairman Patillo stated, the Operations and Technology Committee, we did meet on this past Friday. And so we were provided a status and description of all the types of marquees throughout the school division. In addition to the Operations Department, provided a suggested priority list with the marquees ranked in numeric order of replacement. It was determined that it would be best to replace all school marquees with new digital electronic type signs to better enhance the communication between the schools and the communities in which they serve. As a result, the first signs will be placed, would be the three schools with the recent name changes, which are Woodrow Wilson, James Hurst, and John Tyler. Simondsdale sign, which is inoperable, as well as the Olive Branch school, which has no marquee at all. The other schools would then be placed in rank order as funding is available. It is estimated that for a double-sided, full-color digital sign, based on a very preliminary estimate, would cost approximately thirty-five thousand to forty thousand dollars per sign, which would equate for all signs, a total budget of seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, between eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars for all twenty-two school locations. But I do want to make sure that we throw this out here, that this is an unbudgeted initiative. The funding source for this replacement marquees would be to utilize unexpended, unencumbered year-end funds. These would be one-time non-recurring expenses. And so as far as the rezoning RFP update, the rezoning RFP was issued on December seventeenth, twenty twenty, with initial return of January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. We have received questions from vendors for clarification and more information in order to assist them in submitting their RFP documents. To be fair to the proposers, the due date for questions have been extended from January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, to January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. The new proposal due date is currently February the tenth, twenty twenty-one. However, this is subject to be extended depending on the types of questions received and the time it will take for staff to gather all necessary information.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tillage. Do we have any questions in reference to the update? Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I just want to ask one question. When we're looking at this rezoning, are we looking at just Churchland or are we looking at all of Portsmouth? Can you remind me again?
All of Portsmouth, we're looking at all of our elementary schools.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Tillage. Next, we have agenda item seven point one, the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo and members of the school board. You know, it feels like just yesterday, we were all together. But that's probably because it was only two days ago. So first of all, I want to thank you, thanks, a special thanks to the Finance Department for the clean audit that we have. Mr. Falk and his team, as you all know, they do an excellent job. So this is, this is just another example of it. So thank you, and we definitely will make our thanks known to our staff. I want to first begin my report tonight by acknowledging that this is Virginia Principals Appreciation Week. So if there was ever a year that we need to spotlight the hard work that our principals do every day, this would definitely be. In addition to their ever-present passion for education and seeing that our students succeed, principals this year had to learn how to do their jobs in the wake of a pandemic. Let me be the first to tell you that we're fortunate in Portsmouth to have such outstanding men and women leading our schools. They've kept our buildings running, our staff members focused, and students and families engaged. So let me publicly thank all of our principals for the outstanding work and for everything they do each day to ensure that the children of our city are successful. So thank you very much, principals. Speaking of ensuring that our students are successful, I also want to update you on where we stand with the work on our mental health campaign. Following our meeting on January seventh, the Portsmouth Health Department reached out to partner with us in getting the word out to the community about mental health and resources that we have in place, which is another great collaboration for our division. Working directly with our Department of Communications this week, a production team came and filmed our school psychologists and school counselors for commercial to air locally. We also are producing a longer form of the video to post on our website and social media channels, as well as print materials to send to all of our staff and families. The campaign, this campaign, we have named Here to Help. It will officially kick off on February first. And we're tremendously excited about the work in progress leading up to this launch. It's been a busy past couple of days where the staff has been working to do the filming and the production. And the staff members look very excited in the process and putting that together. As we're heading into the end of the month, we are, of course, completing the end of our first semester. So with that, I encourage all of our students to end the semester strong and make the most of the last days of instruction. For our families at home, I want to remind you that Monday, February first, we will have no school because that is a teacher workday. So Chairman Parent, not Chairman Parent, Chairman Patillo, that completes my report. Mr. Parent, I'm going to leave you. I'm not going to bring you out of retirement.
Dr. Bracy, for that report. We're now going to move right to seven point two for board members' comments. I know we're going to save our reports for the next meeting, which is our work session. Do we have any board member comments at this time? Ms. Thomas, and then Ms. Williams, and then Mr. Tillage.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman Patillo. I'll keep it really quick. Just want to say thank you, Dr. Bracy. You really took, from our last conversation, our last board meeting, I'm sorry, with the mental health campaign. I'm so excited to hear about that. I know we were all talking about like just some of the impacts from the pandemic, you know? Surprisingly, I can't believe we're almost a year since, almost a year virtually. So I know this is an excellent time to launch that. So thank you and to the Portsmouth Health Department. I was going to ask, is it possible for us to just have a review or preview of that? just have a review or preview of that print material before it goes out? Because something, I have been talking to actually some, not the Portsmouth Health Department, but Behavioral Healthcare Services, some of the staff like from the Youth Prevention Program, just to, and I am going on the website like everyone suggested last board meeting to see what resources were available. And the one thing that I hope that we can have in the print materials, just from a parent standpoint, is kind of like where to start, because there's several different places for our parents to start depending on the need. So I think in the print material to have like a roadmap per se, like start here, maybe with your primary care physician, if you have this need, or contact, you know, Portsmouth Health Department with this need, or Behavioral Healthcare Services for this need, and then a roadmap to get to the help you need. Because I did have to click around some. I'm not the expert here. I just wanted to see if we would be able to maybe have a preview of those print materials beforehand. That's it.
I don't think that would be a problem. Now, would you, Chairman Patillo, would that be something that you would want us to work with? I mean, we can put together an ad hoc committee to, that we could share with this committee on what the materials look like, or is this something that, that we're just sending out to everyone?
I'm, I'm, I leave the board. If they think we need an ad hoc committee, we can definitely do that. I know that that would put more time in the process, but if you want to have a committee, we can go ahead and assign two board members to a committee to get that done. And I'll accept emails from board members if you're interested. And serving on that, just shoot me an email, then I can send it to Dr. Bracy, they can get to work with you on that. All right. So I'll be waiting the emails from you all, and I'll shoot it to Dr. Bracy, and then we can get that ball rolling on that. Thank you. Anymore? It was Ms. Williams?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Patillo. And again, thank you, board members, for your vote of confidence. I look forward to working with you again until November. And I can tell already that this will be an A-team, because we have some smart, young elected officials that are ready to go, along with our returning Dr. Ingrid Whitaker. So we have a lot going on here. My question was, I guess, to Dr. Bracy or whomever might know, have we heard anything yet about when Portsmouth Public School Staff may be able to get the COVID vaccination? I think I've read in the paper that Chesapeake had already begun. So do we have any information?
Yeah, I can ask Ms. Williams. It was an email sent out, and I'll make sure it's forwarded to you as well, of a survey for the COVID vaccine, and they're asking staff to complete the survey so that they can be scheduled for an appointment. The first appointment started in February the 3rd. Second one is February the 10th, I believe.
Yes. Okay, please, please forward that to me. Will that cover board members as well?
Yes. Yes, board members can, can schedule that. And I believe Ms. Dora can make sure that gets sent back out to you as well.
Okay.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Tillage and then Mr. Parent?
Thank you, Chairman Patillo. I also want to thank Dr. Bracy for that initiative with the mental health. That is definitely, definitely something that is definitely needed by many of our students as well as our staff. And so I just want to thank you all for that. My question that I have today is related, based on the question I had last month in regards to COVID measures. And I know that I spoke with Mr. Simmons, and he has agreed, he has spoken with doing electrostatic cleaning for buses. And so I want to thank you for that as well, sir, to make sure that our bus drivers are taken care of on the school buses. The only question I had as concern of that was, will our bus drivers be trained on using their equipment? Or are there staff that will be doing it for them?
I'll let Mr. Simmons answer, but I believe they have a separate team and it's scheduled out to how they're going, whether they're going to clean the buses daily, and they schedule the school buildings out to when they're going to clean those also throughout the week. But the drivers won't be responsible for doing that to their own buses. They have a separate team that's going to be doing that. Now, unless, unless with an out, Mr. Dr. Simmons, you can correct me.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo and Chair, Vice Chair Atkinson. Just to answer your question, Board Member Tillage, it's really twofold. And so bus drivers are responsible for deep cleaning and sanitizing during or after each run. What we put in place starting this past Monday is our very own, which we call our DDT team, our deep disinfectant team, which we have here in Portsmouth Public Schools. They go out and that's, it's an additional layer. So it's an additional layer of deep cleaning. They already have a schedule where they do each building on a three-night rotation. I believe I'm in the office, so the team may be in here deep cleaning this one tonight. But that schedule is sent out to everybody across the division. And we added school buses to that starting this past Monday. So every bus at the end of the run, in addition to what bus drivers are trained to do, wipe down, sanitize. So they're involved in it too as well after each run. This is an additional layer where now that team goes out to each lot, each one of our three lots at the end of each run, before those drivers go back the next morning to pick up and sanitize and spray and deep clean. So we're actually doing double and sometimes triple for just to try to mitigate, to make sure people feel comfortable and safe. And we started with the team, we were already doing, drivers doing it in terms of their training and what the CDC recommends. We added this extra layer starting last Monday. And so I believe I sent Dr. Bracy that schedule, the senior staff have that schedule that we shared in terms of the proposal of how the actual DDT team that we have, I think there are 16 members of that team divided up into groups of four that do the schools each night. And they're also now doing our school buses as well.
Well, thank you very much. I definitely appreciate it. And like I said, I just want to make sure that our, all of our employees are, are safe and comfortable. And I'm glad, and I thank you for your prompt response. And thank you.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Parent.
I think my question was answered with that email. That's teachers. Did someone say that the school board members are included as staff or not? Because it said in order to receive the vaccine, you must first complete the short survey by Sunday. That's this Sunday that we have to complete it. So is the board included or we're not included?
Yes, sir, we are included.
Oh, okay. I just.
So all of you should have received the survey in reference to the vaccine in your email. And you have to complete it in order to be scheduled to receive it.
I just wondered if the board was part of the, of that. So that's the reason why I'm asking.
Yeah, yes, sir, we are.
All right.
Right. Were there any more comments or concerns at this time? Thank you all again for your time. And those who are watching live stream, thank you all again for your time and your patience. And I now consider this meeting of the school board adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.